I'd like to welcome everyone to the Fort Platoon City Public Meeting for the zoning of July 13th, 2021. Would you please call the board? Kate Filo, excuse me. Ted Hobis, here. Beth Gilman.
Present.
Roseanne Hickman.
Present.
Lisa Sabodian.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
President.
Jerry Trolle.
Present.
Thank you.
Chairman President.
Yes, Mrs. Hickman.
I make the motion to waive any and all irregularities in the calling and conduct of this meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolle. I have a motion by Mrs. Hickman, seconded by Mr. Trolle, to waive any and all irregularities in the calling of this and conduct of this meeting. Would you please call the board? Jerry Trolle.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Ted Hobis.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero. We're here this evening to discuss the zoning map amendment application for 221 Fulton Street and 517 East Third Street. Anyone that wanted to speak needs to sign up. Everyone sign up that wanted to sign up. And you have five minutes to conduct your statement related to the zoning. It will not be for comment from the audience. It will be the person speaking. If council has any questions, they can ask questions at that time. So we will start. Amy Maggi, 512 East Second Street. And you should come up to the podium, please. She's going to be... Oh, okay.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm pretending to be Amy Maggi. Okay. The parking lot, the parking on the west side of Fulton Street was eliminated, reduced to reduce the traffic congestion in the area. Street parking is often difficult already with current residents, driving children, and overflowed parking from waterworks city events. Any change in the zoning might cause additional need for parking on the streets. Without businesses or residential buildings offering ample off-the-street parking for every resident, employee, guests, and delivery service, this will make further stress on the neighborhood. Any additional congestions, whether it's from deliveries, general increase in the traffic and resident parking would affect the response time of our emergency vehicles that need to reduce parking already.
Thank you. And could you state your name, please?
It's Pam Happyall. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry. Pam Hockster, 513 East Second Street.
I just have a couple of questions of how do they line up with the required departments in this area with parking? And, I mean, do you guys have any designs? Have you seen anything?
I can answer that question. This meeting and the decision for council is solely for zoning. What the proposed change is to change these two parcels of land from what they are right now to general business. What that does is allows for a business to go into those two parcels of land. So, for example, if right now there is a plan that a coffee shop might go into the ground floor of that building, that's all it does. It changes it to general business. Whatever the plans are, they may, they may not be what they are. They may, they may not change. Council only votes for the property, the two parcels, to be changed to general business. For example, if council says, "No, we do not want it to be changed to general business," they can build an apartment complex there tomorrow because they don't need it to be general business to build an apartment complex. The only reason there was a request to change it to general business is so a coffee shop can be built, a barber shop can be built, any type of store, like a location, a store type, a retail establishment can be built. That is the only thing that council is asked to do, change the two parcels to general business. What goes there is not in council's hands. Council is not asked to look at any plans. Council is not asked to look at any designs. What happens after council designs or decides whether or not to change those two parcels to general business, then the developers have to go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission then takes whatever they bring to them, and they have to look at it and say, "Yes, no, maybe, but come back with changes." So, really, I know everybody's very concerned about, you know, the size of apartment complex. This has nothing to do with it. This talks about retail. So, to change two parcels of land to general business, all we're talking about is for two retail possibilities to go in there. It has nothing to do with an apartment complex because they could put an apartment complex in there tomorrow. It's just to talk about ground floor retail, if they want to even do that. So, with regards to the rest of it, that has nothing to do with council. Their only job is to change it from, what is it now, R3 to GB, which is general business. They, they can't, they can't make any other decisions. It's not their job. It's Planning Commission's job. So, I mean, I hope that answered your...
No.
They don't have, they don't have the authority to look at plans.
I believe the first name is Jean, lives White at 400 East Third Street.
Okay, we're talking about business, okay? You've got the two stores right there. You've got the drive-thru, you've got the third, you've got the ice shop, okay? Look at that traffic. If you add more traffic, that is going to be a mess. It's already a mess when you have to go through there. If you make it into a more business, I'm worried about being a mess. Squads, police officers, I mean, I live on Third and Washington, and I sit out on my porch, and if I was a cop, I'd get so many people running through that stop sign and pick them up. I see it all the time.
Well, just to let you know, council's only decision is to look at the two parcels of land and to change it to general business. They don't look, they don't look at the streets. They don't, you know, obviously, they just change it to general business. Whatever, huh?
I don't think it'd be a good idea.
Well, then that's what the public meeting is for, and that's what council is here for. I don't have a vote in the matter. I'm just here to explain the legalities of it. But their only job is to change it from what it is now, which is an R3, to...
Keep it as an R3.
...general business. And that's what you want to tell them, and you want to explain to them. That's what you want to tell them, but that's their only job. That's, that's their only thing they need to consider. Whatever goes in there, whoever, you know, the company that wants to develop, they need to take their plans to Planning Commission. That's a whole separate step after council either approves or disapproves. And to, for this not to pass, you need three-fourths of council to say no in order for it not to pass. So, it's a very high burden not to pass. You need a majority to pass, but three-fourths not to, and that's in the Ohio Revised Code. So, you need six out of seven council members to say no for it to fail. So, that's, that's what we're dealing with for this type of a change. So, I just want to let everybody know, this is, this is not something that, you know, these council members decide. This is the Ohio Revised Code, and this is something that they're stuck with, and it's your job to influence them, so go ahead.
Can we give a clarification on the R3 zoning? What is, what does that, R3 mean?
Residential.
Residential.
It's residential.
Residential.
Is it like single-family?
I think it's much better.
Yeah. Mr. Bickley?
Oh, he left.
No, he did not. He's here.
I'm sorry.
I'm not, Mr. Bickley.
Yeah, let me get to the proper sections and try to answer this question. Or Steve's.
Let's get the hot seat one back.
Steve, the R3 district is defined as the medium-high-density residential district, and when you deal with the purpose of the district, it's defined as medium-high-density residential district, R3, promote the orderly development of medium-high-density, single- and two-family residential uses. So, that's the purpose of the R3 district. And the two lots that are in question are currently zoned residential three.
Which is, what's residential two, three then?
He just explained it.
Oh, the, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought it was two.
Okay, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Did you sign up to talk?
I did.
Okay. You can ask your questions at that time, so we can stay in an orderly fashion, so...
Okay.
Nancy Green, 321 East Third Street.
It's kind of hard to move around, so I think I'll bash pretty well said, and there's so much traffic and so much running lights and stuff, adding emergency vehicles. Somebody's going to get hurt if they've got kids in that corner.
Hi. Thank you.
I'm sorry, 215 East Fourth Street.
Yes, but I'm representing my mother-in-law, who lives at 404 East Third.
And her name is also...
Marcia Chapin. Her name's on the list. I'm against it because there are, there's not enough parking in the area now. If they turn it into a parking lot even behind it, like they're talking, it's going to be even more congested. And I hope that if the council does vote to proceed with this, that you do a study, please do a study on the traffic flow. My husband sat at that corner today after he left 404 East Third Street heading east. He sat at the light for 20 minutes. Fifteen cars ran the red light when he was wanting to turn left, heading east onto Fulton. Then behind those is a squad wanting to come through that couldn't even, there was no place for the people to move over to let a squad through. That's a safety hazard. There was a truck there at the same time at Bell Mills making a delivery. So, it's basically one-lane traffic because they aren't parking on the north side of the road. There's no traffic flow that's safe there. And if you add more businesses, there's no parking for them unless you do find something that's going to be off the road and divert this traffic further away, but you don't have the property for that intersection. Even put more turn lanes in at that section if you want to try to get in at some party mark, you have to wait, hope not more traffic that's heading west on Third, or on Third, heading west on there at that intersection, and they want to pull in. People can't even pull in to go through the party mark. Then you've got people that's coming from hospital at a certain time, everybody gets off work at the hospital. There's bumper-to-bumper traffic. Don't even think about coming heading east on that street to make a left-hand turn onto North Fulton. There's no place for you to go. The traffic is bumper-to-bumper. You wait 20 minutes through a light, and even the police have run red lights through the Washington Street intersection because they're trying to keep the traffic flowing. So, do a feasibility study on the traffic flow before you interject any further higher traffic than what we already have. People cannot get into the other businesses that are there, like if you're heading south of Fulton Street and they want to go to Bell Mills, which is a left-hand turn into their parking lot, and the hospital is getting off, and the school kids are being drove through there, the school buses are coming through there, and they're going to be stopping just around the corner. There's a lot of little kids that go through that intersection. You can't even let them cross the street. It's that dangerous of an intersection. I hope you bring that up when, when they ask you why you do not want to vote for this to go through. If it's a single-family house, you don't have that much traffic. Keep it a single-family dwelling, vicinity area, or a single-family type situation where you don't have all that volume of people coming through that intersection because, quite frankly, Fort Platoon can't handle that volume. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Any... I'm sorry, but I don't know what the last name is. First name's Patrick, lives at 402 East Second.
Patrick Kavitz.
Thank you. Good luck. Yeah.
Well, the 402 Second Street, across the street from the funeral home, and, well, the last couple of days ago, I was cutting aggressive and counting the semi-trucks going Washington Street, cutting corners, driving over the sidewalks and curbs, and we had this redone a few years ago. And in the good old days, there was a no-drug sign on Washington Street. So, I don't know, all of a sudden, this becomes a delivery road or something. So, maybe you guys could think about it, and maybe that sign can appear, appear on the corner of Washington Street someday.
So, that would be an administration?
Well, I...
You know, I mean, if, if that's one of your concerns, you can contact administration.
We were talking about traffic, so I would like to add to it. As far as the zoning is, those people can put up the building like you just described, so why to change it and zone it? If they, you just told us that we can, they, I mean, those people, developers, can put up the apartment building in there today, right? And that's the tag.
Mr. Bickley?
As a clarification, the parcel that are zoned residential three, and as I answered Steve a couple of minutes ago, as medium-high-density consisting of single-family, two-family, multiple-family is not permitted within the R3 district. So, an apartment complex containing three or more dwelling units would not be permitted within the R3 district. Under the general business district or the GB district upon which the applicant requests to rezone two, they are listed, the apartment or multiple-family dwelling is listed as a special use. So, meaning a special use means that if there's going to be proposal for an apartment complex, they would have to submit a special use permit to the city, which is then reviewed by the city, by the city Planning Commission. So, under the current R3 zoning, they cannot use those two lots for an apartment complex or anything associated for an apartment complex. So, the need to rezone two, and they selected the GB district based on the fact that the other lots that they, this is just my opinion, they chose the GB district on the basis of the other lots they have acquired and possibly are looking to acquire that they are currently in the GB district. So, this would make it all one zoning classification if, in fact, the project were proceeded.
So, they cannot put up condos there? Excuse, I'm sorry. You can speak if you...
On those two lots, an apartment complex with three or more units in it is not permitted anywhere on those two lots.
Okay. So, that's just, I'm just clarifying this, because this is on the youth that's staying there.
So, what I see is that they own other lots around it, and those other lots are in the general business? So, in the other lots, they are able to put up an apartment complex. They, it just wouldn't be one big square. So, they are able to put up what they want to put up. It just wouldn't be their current plans, which I indicated when it goes to Planning Commission, it wouldn't be exactly what they came for with.
As a clarification, Dina, they can put up what is approved by the city planning commission.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's what I'm indicating.
So, everyone has to understand that if this is, if these two lots are not rezoned, they still have the option of developing what is currently zoned general business, but it would require a submission to the city Planning Commission as a special use permit application.
Right, and that's what I indicated. No matter what council does, they still have to go to planning. They still have to, you know, put these plans in front of them. Now, Mr., Mr. Bickley, the ones that are zoned, single-family, would they be able to turn those into a parking lot or under a special use or no?
If, if the property is zoned residential three, and they're looking to develop it on the general business district, I would have to take a look at the parking requirements. My, my gut is telling me that no, they cannot use any part of the R3 district for that particular project, but I would have to review the parking requirements to, to bear, to be, to be specific to that answer, to that question.
So, ultimately, what Mr. Bickley's saying is, I mean, whatever council does, whether they vote yes or no, he would still be the ultimate person who is going to have to look at whatever plans to submit.
It's going to be the city Planning Commission that is going to be responsible for reviewing those plans. They will submit it to me, and I will present it to the city Planning Commission.
So, they will submit...
And then there's a public meeting for that poll.
Right. And all of you are welcome at the public meeting as well.
So, I have only one request. Every city has a charter, and please keep it the way it is.
I think the majority of us here, not everyone, is under the, we understand that you are to vote whether it be general business or keep it as residential three. So, I believe that the majority of us here are asking you not to pass it as a, the general business zoning. If you pass it into general business zoning, that would envelope a majority of that block, over a quarter of that block would be zoned general business. Regardless of what goes in there, it's going to cause a severe amount of congestion and safety concerns. That's what we're, the bottom line, we're asking you to consider. Think about the neighbors. Think about the students that have to use Fulton Street to get to the athletic complex, to get to school and back. The hospital employees that use Fulton Street, left and right, the congestion. I know multiple bus drivers that have a severe problem getting out and across Fulton Street during those hours to run their children safely home. I've spoke with them. They, the only way they can get across Fulton Street is by having another bus driver that's already gotten out there stop and allow them to cross. This is a concern for a majority of our kids, a majority of our youth and our elderly that are traveling back and forth through the hospital and to appointments at the doctors behind the hospital. It's just a concern of our whole neighborhood about the congestion and the safety of that area. We've lost parking, the, we have so much traffic. I, again, since I was here the last time, was in my backyard, and I heard a crash happen on Second and Fulton Street. So, I ran out, called 911, airbags deployed, everything. We had to have cars towed away. People injured. It's a constant thing. You can see it, you can hear it. Our neighborhood comes out when we hear it. To make sure that 911's been called, everyone's safe, it's a big concern for all of our neighborhood. So, please, keep that in consideration when you are deciding whether a quarter of that block is going to be general business where anything can go in and cause traffic, or whether we can keep two small lots of that area as residential three as one or two family homes. Please consider that, the safety of all of us. Thank you.
Can I, Mr. Bickley? So, just to be clear, and I know Dina said a couple of times, if it changes, it doesn't mean anything can go in, there's still a lengthy process?
Yes.
And some of that does include parking spaces, traffic flow, there's a lot more that goes into just allowing anything to go in, and that's an in-depth process. We just have one issue right here with the zoning for council. But anything else goes through multiple steps, and if you talk to people who've tried to do anything in the city, they'll tell you it's not easy. And probably that is because of all of the steps. It's not just, we have this idea we're going to make it happen, a lot of it takes a lot of time, and it sounds like it's the intersection at Second and Fulton, and that's the issue without the lane.
Third and Fulton. Yeah. I mean, it's still...
And I go, and I have a lot of patients who, like, in the summer, I go to hair studios. And that's just because of the nature of where we live.
And I understand that. I'm just saying, I believe that this is the first step. If these two lots are zoned as general business, I feel like this is the first step that will allow that...
I just don't want people to think it's so easy and anything can go in there if something changes, that it's not as simple, and anybody that's done anything in the city knows it's really not that, that easy. And I hope those safety concerns are brought up to the people that can address it, you know, if you're seeing issues. Like, people say they see red lights, red lights, stop signs being run. I hope they're calling the police department and the people that can address it.
The police, no. I've called multiple times.
Well, I mean, that's all we can do is make sure everybody knows and...
Right.
And people have to be better drivers, because it's a big safety issue. And that's a lot of our type of loss in general.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Ritter, 520 East Second Street.
That's what I wanted to say about traffic and safety, parking. But I will tell you that I'm sitting here hearing contradictory information while we were in the commission. And I listened to part of it. I logged in, it was my last day of school for the year, so I couldn't take off. But, you know, at that meeting, it was said that the council was merely recommending the city, or that the commission was merely recommending the city council on whether or not to pass it on to you guys, and then it was your, as a whole, it was your decision whether to approve it, not approve it, or request a change. And then we're here, and we hear the exact opposite, that it's, you guys are just voting, you know, it's, you guys are tied to that vote unless six out of seven of you vote against it. But that it was, that it's the Planning Commission's decision to decide whether or not to approve it, disapprove it, or change it. And from what I heard of that and have read about that, it just seemed like there was a lot of confusion and misinformation going on at that meeting, and I'm just, just changing...
I was not at that meeting, I mean, I was not at that meeting, but the decision, as has been explained, is the, in front of the council, their decision is just to change the rezoning.
Yes.
So, what goes in there is not up to council. That's what goes back to Planning Commission, zoning, anything like that.
Right, but at that meeting, everyone was told that, and people who were actually are coming up, on, hold on, on, they, they said that it was up to you guys to say, "Oh, yes, we approve this, we just, we deny it," or whatever. Sorry, frustrated. Or they can come back and say, "No, it's got to go back and be changed." And I guess what I'm hoping is that you guys deny it so that it goes back to get changed, so that it's people actually being informed of the right plan.
Ma'am, it's a two-step process. So, in order for something to occur, so the developers who want whatever this apartment complex builds, the first step is they went to the Planning Commission to request a zoning change. That's step number one.
Yes.
And the Planning Commission then voted to make a request to council to decide whether or not council was going to get to hear about the zoning change.
Yes.
So, they sent a letter to council saying that we, as the Planning Commission, would like council to decide whether council wants to vote on the zoning change. This is why we're here.
What else to vote?
That's step one, huh?
So, you're deciding right now if you want to vote on this?
No, council's going to vote on the zoning change, step one. So, the developers went to Planning Commission, and Planning Commission voted to decide whether or not they were going to ask council to vote on the zoning change, because Planning Commission has to ask council to vote on the zoning change.
So, that's what is happening now?
That's what Planning Commission asked...
This is just the public meeting?
This is just the meeting.
There, there's an ordinance... There, there's an ordinance that will be read three times at the final, and I'll announce those dates and times. This is just to get public comment. Council's not voting today. Will not vote at the council meeting, not voting today. They're just taking information in. That's what the public meeting is for.
Right.
To have the concerns, um, or what, you know, what you feel on the change in zoning. They cannot take into consideration what they're planning on putting in there. That is not up to council.
Right, so step one only talks about zoning. So developers go to planning commission to request a zoning change. Planning commission asks council to vote on zoning change. And this is why we're here. Um, we're, this is the meeting for public comment. Um, no matter what happens at this meeting, um, after the meeting, council will be presented with an ordinance. There will be three meetings, or, I'm sorry, three readings. After the third reading, which, there's three readings. After the third reading, council will have a vote. Each reading takes place at each council meeting, so six weeks later, there will be a vote on whether or not council wants to either approve or deny the zoning change. Okay? Is everybody with me?
Six weeks for now is a vote.
Six weeks for now is a vote. That's step one. That's only step one. If council approves the zoning change to go from, um, R3 to general business, then the developers have to take whatever plans they have in their hands, and they have to call city hall, and they have to get on the calendar for the next planning commission meeting, and they have to then propose their plans to planning commission. That's step two. Planning commission then will have to review whatever plans they have, and they'll either approve them outright, they'll deny them outright, or they'll tell them they need to make whatever changes they need to make and come back and do whatever they need to do. That's step two. So they're two completely separate steps. They're not intermingled with each other, they're not, they have nothing to do with each other. They're completely separate steps.
How, may I ask more?
Yes, may I ask more?
Once council, and correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's fine.
Once council votes yes or no on this zoning, we have no more to do with it.
That's correct.
No more to do with the project.
I've heard that.
And if council votes no.
That's the way it is?
If council says no, that's it, everybody goes home, we're done. That's it.
But at what point did that happen in your study?
Well, no, 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 that's not true. I'm just saying, six out of seven members have to say no. It's not slim, it just, that's, that's the number. Six out of seven have to say no.
I'm just thinking that with all of the confusion and misinformation that was flying at that first meeting of the planning commission, that should be dumped by you guys and be sent back to the planning commission to at least be cleaned up so that everybody understands what's going on, including the owner.
Well, it can't, it can't, it, it can't do, we can't do that because-
So you can't deny it and they can't reapply?
No, no. All they are doing, the only thing that, the only reason the developers went to planning initially for step one was to request a zoning change. The developers unfortunately were trying to be a little zealous, they were trying to be forthcoming, and they brought all these plans. They should, probably should never have done that. Because all they were asking for, and all they needed to ask for was a zoning change.
So they don't need a reason to do a zoning change, they just do the zoning change?
No, they just, they, they really don't.
And that's the way it is for every piece of property in the city of Portland?
Yes.
Is that correct?
I mean, they can maybe-
You want it zoned business, you can zone it business.
They can, you know, I'm sure they, you know, probably can, you know, give a brief statement, you know, maybe submit a brief paragraph, but they, they brought very detailed plans which caused an uproar in the community. And those plans could very well be denied. I mean, they, you know what I mean? So it brought a huge uproar for maybe no reason whatsoever.
Right, but once it's zoned, it's zoned.
But you're, you're looking at the final project of the, of an apartment complex that could be denied. We're still at zoning for general business. So they got, they got a little excited, the developers got a little excited at the beginning, and they brought this huge mon- monstrosity of a project forward just to ask for a zoning change. Which they didn't have to do, and it got everybody really excited. Um, and maybe all for nothing because it might, in the end, be denied anyway. But first, the zoning has to be approved. Which is, the meeting tonight is just for the zoning change. Because as Mr. Bigley stated, if council, even if council does approve the zoning change, they could take your plans to planning commission, and planning commission could say, uh, no, you don't have enough parking, forget it. Or, uh, there's too much congestion, no. Or it's too high, no. I mean, they can say no for a lot of reasons, and then the developers would then have to go back and redo it and go back to planning commission. But the zoning part would already be done, it would just be general business.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. It doesn't change what I think that the council should be doing.
In your opinion, for them not to do it is fine. I'm not trying to change your, I'm not trying to change your mind, I'm just trying to explain the confusion.
I know.
I know there's been a lot of confusion.
There is a lot of confusion. Some of us have wondered what the purpose of the confusion was, if there was any confusion or if it's just confusion. But anyway, neither here nor there. Uh, are the meetings for the planning commission published? Because I haven't seen any, the meeting, the agendas.
She can answer that. I have the second chair for the planning commission. Mayor Snyder, Tracy Colston, our city service director. Jeff, um, Jeff Morgan's our chairman, who is a real estate agent here. Phil Volte, who's a real estate agent. And Lois Evans, who, her and her husband own Lacy's Dairy Construction. The meetings are public. They are not on our website. Chairman has not asked to have them placed on the website. But everything here in the city is open up for public comment, or public records request. But you're welcome to join the meeting as well. And there is a discussion area for public at that time if you want. Right, and I said that on. Right. Did you understand?
Yes.
Did you have any questions further?
I do.
Okay.
So how, how are we notified?
It's placed in the newspaper, the beacon, every, uh-
The agenda?
No, ma'am, yes, correct. The agenda is placed in the beacon. Uh, but the example would be, the next meeting is the twenty-second of July. So it is in this Thursday's paper.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, uh, so that's the way that anybody gets-
I'm sorry?
The last meeting that we attended, you said that it was not put in the beacon. It's only put in the, uh-
Excuse, okay. It's in the beacon.
Well, that was for this, for the public meeting for tonight.
That's for this meeting, that's not planning commission.
Yeah, the public meeting for tonight was published in the New Seron.
Correct, and I have proof of affidavit of that.
Oh, so the agendas are published in the beacon?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, are the minutes published as well?
No, that's separate, public records request.
Okay, and are all of those at eleven AM on Thursdays?
Uh, they, currently this summer, we have two per month. Generally, we have only one per month because there's so much building going on. In the city, we're trying to accommodate people, we're not holding people up for a month at a time to come in. So currently, through September, we are having two meetings a month. The second and fourth Thursday of the month.
Okay.
And it is on our, online, and under zoning, it reads that, the schedule is there.
The schedule is there?
Yes, ma'am.
On the city website?
Correct.
Uh, but they never do public meetings in the evening?
No, ma'am, we've always had during the day. This is the only evening meeting that I'm aware of, outside of committee meetings. Thank you.
Next person?
Terry Mosher, eight zero two, East Perry Street.
I don't want to talk to me, but I didn't think we were allowed to say anything, as I will, so.
Okay, okay.
I am in your house.
Okay. Um, forgive me, I think this is Lenore Frederick, five two ninety, Second.
Yeah, that would be.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. This is all kind of confusing stuff, but living in the neighborhood and listening to people push things about traffic, I do have to agree, um, I can tell you that in the last week, a piece could fall many times regarding speeding vehicles. Um, they have posted stakeouts on Short Street, you should watch that area. Also, if you're going to, for general business, there are so many vacant businesses downtown. Why can't they not be directed to downtown and rejuvenating, or downtown city?
Well, and just so everyone knows, every business downtown is already sold and something's going in.
Well, how are they, brother?
But we, but as council and administration, you know, unfortunately, um, we can't tell people where to buy, that they've already purchased this property, so.
But I'm still against it, I, you know, people are here in Portland for the quaintness of it and its opportunity. And I do not believe that any other housing, no matter what size or shop will benefit anyway in our city, except for maybe a tax base, which it seems that our tax base is not even adequate now to keep up from the streets and the added traffic and the wear and tear on that part, but also, that needs to be considered.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry, excuse me.
You know, that needs to be considered in that way. Uh, you know, they had the million-dollar sewer projects and things, and you look at the upkeep of the roads now, and there's weeds growing out of the sewers that we've spent so much money, and it's all just going to be, there's not going to improve anything. I don't see this as a benefit anyway to our city in any way, shape, or form. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please, Pam Hatfield again, five zero eight, East Second.
Okay, hello. Again with the traffic, but at Second and Fulton, there is no stoplight. It hasn't been there for, I don't know how many years. I'm not sure where it went, if it went maybe to the jet, or where it went. But that's another issue, a huge issue. I mean, you can sit on the front porch and almost there's an accident there probably over fifteen minutes. They're slamming on the brakes in the middle of the intersection. It's, it's just terrible. And, you know, I, I'm just curious as to how many more parking lots and apartment buildings were going to happen uptown. You're, you stated that all the businesses downtown were sold. Because when you drive through town, and you, you even head down Perry Street, it, it's sad. The businesses are closed, they're empty, they're vacant, they're, they're just, they don't, you know, maybe our local realtors could help promote other places instead of property in the middle of single-family homes. And again, I talked about the fire department coming down Third Street. That's their, pretty much their means to come down Third Street and Fulton, and go everywhere on the west side of town, south side, west side. Yes, west side of town. So it, it's just very important that we think really hard about that. And then I don't feel the service systems are able to capable of handling a humongous apartment building in that section because they haven't been replaced for years. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
She said, Dennis White was your safety service director in traffic and place from the second and Fulton Back, so how many years ago he was asking for it? But it is, it's safety.
If you, I mean, that's something, unfortunately, council doesn't put in or take out stuff like, or anything like that. I know on the city website, there, you can put something in there.
What happened?
A concern, I'm sure, when you do that, I mean, you can, correct me, Mr. Colston, but I think there has to be a traffic study done when you do add or take out.
There, there was before.
Yeah, so, at that point, my next, but, Mr. Colston's here, so.
When they did, when they did the project going down Second Street, they did a traffic study there, it was before maybe on Fourth and Sixth. It was a traffic study.
And I know that they did take the parking back to just one side because of it being in the hospital, because it used to be on the street. Um, with the rain, you may need to speak louder, otherwise we won't get the recording. Uh, I believe it's Mary Lou?
Yes, ma'am.
And, could you say your last name?
Nallett.
Nallett, at two thirty-one Lincoln, thank you. And my husband, Steve. Um, we live on the corner of Lincoln and Third, which is not directly related to that block, that's a question. But I think that we agree with most people in the room that the zoning needs to remain as residential three instead of general business. Our concern with adding any more traffic is the emergency vehicles and everybody else comes down Third and turns on Lincoln to go out State Street. All the emergency vehicles fly down with their running half, with their lights on, one direction, and then five, six minutes later, they come back the other and go right through town. And there just really isn't enough space to add any more businesses or anything. And then I also worry about the infrastructure, um, if we were to put in any big amount of business. I think that what's there will probably handle, continue to handle R3, but anything else, uh, in your vote to deny the change from R3 to general business will put a big cog in the wheel of their development if that they go for. And if it's not there, maybe we'll keep it down and keep our, um, safety, um, in place. I think I was going a lot of help. Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. You're supposed to ask very publicly comments, I mean.
I'll ask.
Does it relate to the rezoning, or does it relate to something else?
She could talk to me.
If it doesn't relate to the rezoning, then ask Mr. Colston after. Okay. Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Reed, I have a question for you. R3, to Bigley, answer.
Oh, okay.
R3, did you say that R3 density is one to two families per unit?
By definition, let me get it back in a second. It reads medium-high-density residential district, R3, is to promote the orderly development of medium-high-density single-two-family residential uses. That is the definition of the R3 district.
So, that's one thought. The second thing, is there anyone here who represents any of the companies who have anything to do with this project? Is anybody here? Somebody here from the project to let us know?
They say they own my property, which is going to be part of that project, but they don't own my property, and I sold my property to anyone. So, but they haven't cleared out certain, uh, project plans.
See, I think that's a part of the problem, is that their plans did get out, I mean, clearly, because I should cover it at this point. But, uh, it seems to me that they are putting a lot of people in a small area, and I don't think we would be as upset or unhappy with this if it were not so squeezed down.
But again, that is not also, because that's just zoning, so. Ms. Phillips, that, that again is their, their, like, projected plan, that doesn't ultimately mean it's going to be the actual plan.
Well, often, the projected plan is what comes through, it may be more complicated than what we started with, so. Many of you people are going to do anything. You really need to go to the planning commission meetings to voice your opinion, and at that point, because we are limited here, it's going to be only yes or no on the zoning. Yes, if we think it should be changed to general business one, or no, if we would like it to stay R3 for the present time. Let's stay R3.
And that is just the new, the two additional, two parcels. The other item, the other parcel that you, they own are already gone, business, so that would just be included, these extra two parcels.
What are the parcels?
What are the parcels that they own? Um, because I, I put it to you, I don't know, Mr. Bigley, do you know?
So they all, I don't have the addresses, so I don't wanna confuse people as to exactly which one, obviously they own the two lots that they requested to rezone. They own, do you remember Tracy? They owned a lot adjacent to the alley, and it's this lot, and I can't remember if there's a third lot, there's a vacant, if you remember, there was a house taken down, but I think that's the parcel that's being rezoned. So then it's, and I can't remember your last name, I apologize.
Gagnon.
This is, this is Gagnon's property. Then it comes to the alley, and then they acquired the lot on the other side of the alley. So they probably own the two lots on Fulton Street from the alley going south. That's currently zone GB, general business. This would be the third lot, um, that's currently zone R3, which if approved would then go to the GB district. That's how I remember it, but I don't have a site plan or, or the others.
Behind on the alley.
Yeah.
Does that help with people understanding what they're trying to look at?
If you'd like, I'll be in my office tomorrow, you're more than welcome to stop in, and I'll try to show you what, what they own.
Is it a three lots, Mr. Bigley?
Oh, wait a minute, it's Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday, I'm in Thursday, I'm sorry.
Don't they, um, three lots, Mr. Bigley?
I believe you're correct, but I don't have that information from...
And that can also be looked up on the, on the county auditor's website. And any public meeting that we have, the record can be requested as a public record. Just have to request that through the city administration. Does council have any credit? Okay, um, so as I mentioned earlier, there will be free reading of the ordinance related to the rezoning. The first meeting is tonight, um, which begins at six o'clock, will be read at, on the agenda, it's listed on the agenda under the first readings. The second reading will be on July twenty-fourth, meeting begins at six. The final reading will be August tenth, meeting begins at six PM, and it will be that evening, if council, if they so choose, will take a vote on it at that time.
Mrs. Sordi, what day did you say, on July?
The twenty-fourth is the second.
Wasn't it the twenty-seventh?
Was it the twenty, oh, twenty-seventh, correct, sorry. I was thinking fourteen day.
August twenty.
Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, thank you for that correction.
And August the tenth?
August the tenth is the third reading.
And that'll be the vote.
Correct. That will be, um, council will be asked if they would like to take action on that ordinance, or, yeah, ordinance. And then if you would like to sign up at that meeting that night, you can sign up to speak during public comment, and you have five minutes at that time, that's the only time that public comment will be taken in reference to that ordinance. And the voting of the ordinance is just council speaking and discussing the ordinance. And then, again, it's a public meeting, so if you'd like to... Seeing notes for their business, anyone entertain a motion?
Oh. Okay, I have a question. So, if not people go over and talk to the planning committee, or the planning committee does their research, whatever they need to do, um, either check their primary data here on all this stuff, they look at it, insight, you know, this is not a good thing. You've already done the first reading.
But that, we don't have anything...
Okay, I'm just asking, this, yeah, I guess this is different for me. The last time this happened a few years back, they wanted to change my blocks commercial, we went to the planning committee, remember was there, Mr. Colton, a few others, they expressed concerns and it didn't even happen.
Okay, well, if, if planning commission, okay, so I guess we'll explain that. If planning commission votes no, it is not even brought to work out.
Okay, then why, you should, I guess, why is the first one tonight that maybe just bring you back another one?
You're mixing it up again. So initially, when planning commission met, they decided, they voted to write a letter to send to council so council could decide whether there should be a change in rezoning. That already happened.
Lisa, Lisa, if someone files an application to rezone their property, anybody in here files a rezoning application to rezone their property from a district to another district, the process of that rezoning application begins. The first step is to go to the planning commission. Planning commission holds a public hearing. They will review that application, they will make a determination as to whether or not, and they will make a recommendation to city council as to whether or not that application should be approved, disapproved, or modified. They are required to make a decision. That application is, that recommendation is then forwarded on to council. Council is required to hold a public hearing concerning that rezoning application. The process continues from beginning to end, can only stop if the applicant withdraws his application. So council is required to hear the case and they are required to act on the recommendation from the city planning commission. The city planning commission's recommendation in this particular application was for approval. So the planning, or the city council will review and, and their decision will be on whether or not to accept the recommendation of the city planning commission. As Deanna has identified, there's a certain number, if they're going to disapprove that or not accept that recommendation and disapprove the rezoning request or modify that rezoning request, then they have to do so by three quarters, which is six out of seven members. That's, that's the process. It doesn't, it doesn't stop because the planning commission said no. It continues on, planning commission only makes a recommendation, and then that goes to the city council, city council makes the final decision as to whether or not a rezoning application is approved, disapproved, or modified.
So the city council can make the decision to modify this?
They can modify it, they do have the option of modifying the request, but that has to be done by three quarters of them. Since the planning commission's recommendation was for approval, to modify or not approve a request, it has to be done by three quarters of the voting council.
And that's only pertaining to zoning?
Yeah.
We're still only on zoning?
You're now reviewing a site plan. The developers submitted a site plan just to give an idea as to what they are considering. They, if it's approved, they can come in with a site plan that doesn't resemble that particular plan. But in talking with the representative of the applicant, it was their determination to submit a, a site plan so that the council, the residents of the city were aware of what they were thinking for that in Portland. And, um, now, in that, in this particular case, I'm talking for the applicant, which I should not be doing, but it just gives you an idea of what their thought press, thought process may or may not have been.
Okay. We have council starting in two minutes, so...
And again, I remind everybody, I'm in my office Thursday, I have talked to Ms. Ritter, um, one-to-one, you're more than welcome to stop in, give me a call. If thirty of you call it one time, I'm not gonna talk to you all at one time, so, please bear with me, if you'd like to, like to come in and just talk about it, please feel free to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Bigley. And, 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 and,